If everyone, if everyone would please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance and posting the colors. Heavenly Father, we come before you today recognizing the strength of your knowledge and skill that you have bestowed upon us. Be with us as we have these deliberations. Guide our thoughts and guide our actions that we may work together. As we prepare to commemorate the death of Dr. Martin Luther King, may we remember words that he said. He said that darkness is not eliminated by darkness but by light. Hate is not eliminated by hate but by love. May that be our guiding principle as we go through our lives. We pray for all those who serve us, whether they're in this country or abroad. Grant them safety and protection. Bless and watch over them and watch over their families here at home. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. By the way, the colors were by Laney High School, Air Force ROTC. Principal Sharon Deschamme. Instructor Colonel Thomas Harrison Smith and Master Sergeant Bruce C. And the national anthem was from Ashley High School. Principal Patrick McCarthy. Instructor Robert Parker.
My name's DJ Bowles and I'm a senior tuba player at Ashley High School.
I'm Izzy Butler. I'm a percussionist and I'm a freshman.
If our cadets will come down and introduce themselves.
I am Cadet Staff Sergeant Blowers.
I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Simmons.
I'm Cadet Samantha Woodward.
I'm Cadet First Lieutenant White.
I'm Cadet in my first class. Join now.
Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Everett B. Higgins.
Here.
Jeanette S. Stevens.
Here.
Janet A. Cavanaugh.
Here.
Lisa Isa.
Here.
Norm S. Hayes.
Here.
Bruce T. Shaw.
Here.
David R. Warren.
You have before you the agenda. I don't know if the superintendent has any additions or deletions. Well, we will go ahead and I don't think he does. So, do I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda as a saying?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is done. Next item, approval of the minutes. Special meeting minutes, December 20th, 2017, January 2nd, 2018, January 30th, 2018, February 9th, 2018, February 27th, 2018, March 6th, 2018, and March 21st, 2018. interim meeting minutes, January 9th, 2018. Budget Development Committee meeting minutes, March 14th, 2018, and regular meeting minutes, February 6th, 2018. Do I hear a motion to accept those?
One minute, a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Next item on our agenda, recognition of achievement. Ms. Quattlebaum or whoever. Ms. Thomas. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. In Ms. Quattlebaum's absence, I'll be doing the recognitions of achievement. Tonight, our community partnership presentation features Live Oak Bank and the support they provide for the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. Here tonight to tell you more about this great partnership is Principal Adrian Pearson and from Live Oak Bank, Delia Bell and Kate Groot.
Chairman, vice chair, members of the board, Dr. Markley. I just want to take a moment to say thank you for this opportunity. The Career Readiness Academy at Mosley has made some tremendous strides over the last few years and a lot of the things that we've been able to do outside of our normal day in budgeting has been with the assistance and help from our great partners at Live Oak Bank. So, I want to take a moment to say thank you very much for what you guys have done for us and we look forward to the future and what else to bring. Thank you.
Well, hi, we're happy to be here. We're excited about the partnership that we have with CRA at Mosley and we look forward, again like you said, to the future and all the other wonderful things that we're going to get to do together. So, we're just going to go kind of into our presentation and tell you a little bit about what we've been doing with them since we connected with them in 2016. Alright, so like I had mentioned, our partnership started in 2016. We were approached by Mr. Pres- sorry, Principal Pearson. And we sat down at the school with them and kind of discussed the NAF program and our partnership was official in 2017. We did issue on our first financial grant this year, which that's kind of Kate's role. I work with the closing department and Kate is the Director of Corporate Philanthropy. So, I don't know if you want to-
I'm four day volunteers and I still take grant making at the bank and so I've been helping Dee Dee whenever she needs help and whenever Mr. Pearson and Ms. Hazel we call, then I step forward and try to just have all the troops fall in line.
So, our first thing that we did with the school was we took a panel of various bank employees to the bank, just to kind of show them all the diverse roles that you can have within a bank and just show that not all bankers are bankers. When you tell a kid that they're going to maybe grow up to be a banker, it doesn't sound that exciting. So, we really wanted to show them all the different things that you can do while working for a financial institution. We took our Director of Corporate Health, a Special Assets Officer. I went myself, a paralegal, in-house paralegal, and one of our computer program developers. And we just really tried to show them that regardless of what your interest is, you could still find a home in the finance world. And then the next thing we did was a panel on the lending process. So, this was a more traditional thing. We were asked to do it, it was during the NAF module on financial services. And we showed them the more traditional roles within a bank and talked a lot about what we do and how we do it differently from our competitors, just to show them that there's options out there. Next thing we did, and this was probably my favorite and the most fun, was we brought a group of students to the Live Oak campus and hosted a lunch and learn. They toured the campus with us. We got a few people, one of our onsite restaurant manager, a computer coder, and then the Director of Corporate Health, to sit down with small groups and answer questions and really just get them excited about the different things in life that you could do within working within a financial institution. Probably one of my favorite things happened on this trip. We had one student who, when he got there, you know, was like, "I'm going to be an NFL player when I grow up." And by the time he left, he was like, "You know what? I think I might be a computer coder." So, kind of cool to see some, you know, you empower somebody to change their goals or, you know, aspirations in life. We did a panel on ethics. This was very recently, actually. This was once again, along with one of the modules they were doing with the NAF program. We really focused on ethics in the workplace, what it means to be an agent for a business, social media and the decisions that they make now and how those can impact the rest of their lives. And then also focused on giving them some real life examples of the ethical situations that we've seen in our lives and that it's not always black and white. There can be that gray and you have to be real careful in the decisions you make. I go to the advisory board meetings as liaison for Live Oak Bank and I try to be as active and of a member as I can be. I do go and grade the cumulative projects as often as I can. This is one of those presentations, actually. So, I really enjoy that. I think that's the piece that I like the most about being on the advisory board is going and getting to give positive and impactful feedback to the kids on these modules that they're doing. So, that's a lot of what we've done with CRA. We do have a few other things that we do within the community for the school system. Just a quick touch on those, we do junior achievement. We've done it with Sunset Park and Alderman. We provide tutors to glow. We have volunteers reading at Forest Hills and we're hoping to add Alderman. And then we posted a lunch and learn through the VRC's ninth grade. There we go, thank you. And that's it, that's all I got. So, thank you.
You also have a presence on with the Blue Ribbon Commission.
That we do.
And I know that you all have the big picture. I guess my question for you would be, from the time you begin with the students to the time you wrap up, who learns the most? Do you, do they learn more from you or do you learn more from them?
That's a great question. I think a lot of our employees have really appreciated being able to interact with them and see where they are, whether it's in an elementary school or in a high school, and see how they can help in their interactions. But I like to think that they get a little bit of something from us. If nothing else, we gave them some really good food.
Now, what I meant by the comment was most folks that I see that work with young people and try to expose them to the world and the possibilities, they find that they learn a lot from them in terms of their perspective and then how you can approach them to be more successful each time you meet. So, anyway, I thank you a lot for what you do.
Thank you. We appreciate the partnership and the opportunities.
Principal Pearson, what made you reach out to Live Oak in the first place? Like why them?
There was several layers involved there. First of all, they're doing some very good things. It's probably one of the most progressive campuses in our community and then also leading out a long time for education.
Good pick.
Well, thank you for all that you do for our school system. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we recognize the four recipients from this year's Board of Scholarships for future teachers.
The county commissioners and Board of Education have made an investment in our future educators. We'd like to acknowledge that Mr. Rob Zapple, county commissioner, is here this evening. This scholarship is for $7,000 each year to an accredited North Carolina college or university of the recipient's choice for a total amount of $28,000 per scholarship. The scholarship for recipients make a commitment to teach at least four years in New Hanover County schools, helping build our pool of highly qualified teachers. We appreciate the principals from the schools that these future teachers come from. They are Mrs. Deschamme, Laney High School, if you could stand. Dr. Steve Sullivan, Hogarth High School. Ms. Mary Paul Bell, Isaac Bear Early College. We also appreciate Mrs. Dolores Overby, principal of Riceboro Elementary School, who allows Laney cadets to teach at her school. And Laney Teacher Cadet Coordinator, Ms. Rochelle Dombrowski. At this time, at this time, I'll introduce this year's scholarship recipients and ask you to please remain standing for a group picture. From Laney High School, Phoebe Rathers. And from Isaac Bear Early College, Tyler Gibson. Yes, if their parents are here, we ask that you please come to be recognized.
Board members as well.
years.
I would let the audience know that our first class will graduate this year and return to us as teachers this fall. So, we look forward to placing them in our schools.
Next, we applaud students across the district for awards earned in the state PTA Reflections Contest, an arts recognition program that encourages students to explore their talents and express themselves while enhancing quality arts education. When I call your name, please come forward and remain standing for a group picture. From Myrtle Grove Middle School, Linda Yap, who won the Special Artist Award for Outstanding Interpretation. Cantor from Parsley Elementary, Valadee Kamik from Myrtle Grove Middle School. In film production, we congratulate Maya Roseborough from Anderson Elementary. And Jake Barrow from Parsley Elementary. In literature, Pittman McEwen from Ogden Elementary. In music composition, Scott McFarlane from Parsley Elementary. And finally, in photography, we congratulate Katie Edge from Parsley Elementary. And from Holly Shelter Middle School, Trista Guidi. Our first place winners will now compete in the National PTA Contest. When I call your name, please step forward. Ellie Badrick, Valadee Kamik, Maya Roseborough, and Benjamin Davis. We wish you the best of luck at the next level. And our last award, finally, we'd like to recognize Alec Sampson of Hogarth High School. Alec is a wrestler who went undefeated this year and recently earned the 4A State Wrestling Championship in the 160-pound weight class for Hogarth High School. I would like to invite Alec to please come. If Alec's parents are here, could you please stand to be recognized? Also, if wrestling coach Thomas Pierce, Athletic Director Kristy Tennis Brown, and Dr. Sullivan, if you're here, please stand also. Congratulations, Alec, on your hard work.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is the call to the audience. We have had no one to sign up. So, we'll move on from there. Next item, Head Start Report.
As you can see on your agenda, you have three items. The first is the Liaison Report, which you're familiar with. Just for the audience's sake, Head Start is a federally funded program. You Hanover County Schools took over some time ago and has done an excellent job with. There are 263 and four-year-old children that are served in this program. It's federally funded and because of that, this board serves as a fiduciary, in a fiduciary capacity. So, for transparency, each month, we come forward and we talk about the program and we're, we have experts here that we can ask questions of. I am in front of you is the Liaison Report, which is much of the demographics, but some of the updates are teachers, for the benefit of the audience. Teachers met with families at their homes to discuss children's progress, upcoming kindergarten registration, and update progress on goals for those families. So, I think that's awesome that they reach out in that capacity to be more successful. So I think that's awesome that they reach out in that capacity to be more successful. Johnson Pre-K held its annual kindergarten transition night, where representatives from 14 schools shared information on their programs and kindergarten readiness. These included district schools, year-round, magnet, lottery, and the UNCW Lab School, which is about to begin at the Virgo site. North Carolina Head Start Association 49th Annual Conference was attended by two of our teachers and a family specialist. So again, they're constantly working to have the latest and greatest to do the best job. There are some other items there. I think that's the major highlights for tonight. I have experts with me. Are there any questions about that report? Okay, second item is your monthly expenditure report. And again, for the benefit of the audience, it's a $1.97 million federal grant and the school system provides indirect support such as where the program is housed and utilities and IT or information technology and other areas of support. It is a grant that runs through April. So we are, for purposes of tonight, 10 months into our 12-month program. 10 months would be about 84% of the year. And as you can see, from a bottom-line standpoint, we have spent a little less than that, 79% in total, on the program. Any questions about that?
The indirect costs, what is that made up of?
Indirect cost is the, how the school system backs up and supports the program. Not direct dollars, but such things as the building, the maintenance, the utility cost, the IT backup, that kind of thing.
Did you just explain that? I'm sorry.
Ma'am?
I said, "Did you just explain that?" I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I got distracted.
The grant requires that we, as the grantor, provide a certain amount of indirect cost. And so that's how we do that.
And the third item on the agenda for Head Start, the last item, is very exciting. And I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Miles to make an introduction that we're very, very proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Schell. Let me introduce to you the First Advocates Project Program. The First Advocates Project is an 18-month parent training program conducted by the National Head Start Association in conjunction with early education programs in North Carolina and Florida with the support of PNC Grow Up Great. In this project, only five parents get selected from the state of North Carolina to represent in this project. Only five. If selected, they will learn about specific pieces of state legislative related to early childhood education, how to paraffly tell a story as a parent, how to engage lawmakers, how to build relationships and collaborate with others in the state to improve access and the quality of early learning. They will participate in a series of in-depth leadership and educational trainings. This curriculum includes, but is not limited to, effective speaking, building relationships, networking, messaging the importance of high-quality early education. In addition, they will have the privilege of visiting the state Capitol and applying their learned skills by sharing their story. We are so very proud tonight to share with you Ms. Brittany Kermadi, who has been selected to participate in 2018 First Advocate Project. Brittany has three beautiful children, whom all attended Dorothy B. Johnson Pre-K Center, Head Start. She is a working parent that is very dedicated to the education of her children. Congratulations, Mrs. Kermadi.
Good evening. It's an honor to receive this award. As I was talking to Ms. Shannon, I was offered this position after doing a long application. At first, I didn't want to do it. It was something challenging, takes a lot of dedication. We'll be traveling to Florida and Washington for trainings. But I stuck the board and that's something that I'm looking forward to doing. Also, we just got confirmation that we will be beginning the training starting in mid-May, the end of May. The first training will be held in Raleigh, so it's not too far. But I've had the honor to serve with the Policy Council for four years as my children been through Head Start. As of right now, I'm just looking forward to representing New Hanover County on this journey. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Miles, have a question.
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We have been awarded a five-year extension on our Head Start program without having to bid for it. Is that correct? Non-competitive?
Non-competitive. So what we did in four years of executive years of operation, we have not had any finding with our federal government program with Head Start. Therefore, at this point in time, nobody can bid against it. They cannot bid to take over those services, New Hanover County Schools has granted.
I just wanted to make that aware to indicate what a quality program you and your staff have been running at Head Start and how good it has been for New Hanover County.
Thank you very much. And we couldn't do that with our direct services at Johnson in the support of the Board of Education. We appreciate you very much. Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is under Information, Empowering Youth, Engaging Schools, IAS Grant, Appendix D, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good to see you all tonight. I have good news. We have received a grant from the National School Climate Center. And we're going to talk a little bit about that. We're going to introduce some guests from New York City tonight to come and talk to us about this grant. Five New Hanover County middle schools recently were selected for the IAS Grant from the National School Climate Center. The Empowering Youth, Engaging Schools Grant is a three-year initiative that combines a comprehensive approach to school climate improvement with an instructional approach to build cultural competency and reduce bullying behaviors. The five participating middle schools are Murray, Myrtle Grove, Williston, Trask, and Holly Shelter. Tonight, I'm proud to have with us a couple of folks that, from the center, and I'm going to introduce them in just a moment, but I'd like to provide recognition for a couple of members of my team who worked really hard on this. Kristen Jackson, Kristen, come up. Did you sit up here with me? Yes, absolutely. And Judy Stubblefield, who is our, as most of you hear about, all the travellings that she does throughout the county all year. I'm going to ask them just to come up and any questions you might have. But right now, I'd like to introduce our guests, who are going to provide a brief overview of this program from the National School Climate Center in, yes, that's right, New York City. Whitney Allgood, who is the CEO, and Serena LaRocque, who is the Director of Education. A few ladies would come up.
As they're coming, I'd like to recognize one more person back there. We actually learned about this grant because we were doing a presentation with Judge Corpening in Charlotte. And so Judge, thank you for the invitation to that event because it helped us lead us here. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? It's great to be here. Thank you for welcoming us into, I'm going to be speaking and Whitney is behind me as some moral support. I'm going to make this a little bit interactive, if that's okay. If you could be vulnerable with me for a moment. I promise it's only a little bit of vulnerability because vulnerability is earned, so. How many of you have experienced bullying, whether personally or indirectly with someone you know, or have seen bullying? Just raise your hand. Okay, so I think that I wanted to start there because this is not uncommon at all. So I'm going to give you some statistics before I go into the program. Nearly one in four U.S. students have been victims of bullying behaviors. The second thing is 70% of students have witnessed bullying. Only four in 100 adults will intervene. Victims of bullying are more likely to miss school, be suspended, be incarcerated, drop out of school, and experiencing learning problems. So I just wanted to start there because there is a need, right? It's always important to think about the why. So we have a school climate survey that we've been gathering data for about 10 years. And one of the domains in our survey does focus on safety. And over the 10 years of data that we collected, we find that students report feeling less socially and physically safe than adults realize, right? And so that's an important thing to just pause on because if we're thinking about this initiative, we really engage the youth in doing this. And that's exactly for that reason. So what is IAS? Quick mission statement. It seeks to engage and empower youth and community to create safer schools by building cultural competency to reduce bullying behaviors. I'm going to say what that means. I just threw a bunch of things at you, but I just wanted to say what that mission statement is. So this is a fully funded initiative. It's about 1.5 million resources to this community for a number of reasons. I'm going to talk about what that money would be spent on and what it entails. But it is a multi-year initiative, so that's why we came here to New York City because we know relationships matter and you're stuck with us for three years. So that's what I wanted to start off with. It engages and empowers staff, students, and communities to create safer schools by recognizing and reducing bullying behaviors. And it combines a comprehensive school climate improvement. So our National School Climate Center, it's that piece. What is school climate? So we're looking at norms, values, we're looking at organizational structures, we're looking at teaching and learning, just really the whole school as an entity. And also, because the classroom matters, we partnered with Facing History and Ourselves that has that instructional approach. So they're going to work with the teachers to talk about curriculum. They're going to work with them to talk about pedagogy, to have some student-centered approach. How do you handle this situation? How do you discuss this particular curriculum? So it's both from the classroom, but then thinking about leadership down. It's that top-down, bottom-up approach. And through this, the school leaders will gain skills and capacity to sustain and deepen these changes over time. So we don't want to just be with you for three years and leave and there's no evidence of what we've done, right? So we want to build and sustain those efforts. So let's talk about our impact a little bit. So you're not the first group that we're trying this on. We did pilot this in Illinois. We worked with Prevent School Violence Illinois. We liked, at that point, we worked with a more local organization. And it was a three-year anti-bullying initiative. And through that, we saw up to 40% reduction in bullying behaviors. So we had five schools and they ranged from suburban to urban. There were no rural schools, I'll be honest. But that's the group that we worked with. And so we did see results. A little bit about, so I kind of laid out the what and the why. So who are we, right? I'm representing the National School Climate Center and we've been around for over 20 years. We've worked with international ministries. We've worked with state Department of Education. So currently, I'm managing a partnership with Pennsylvania as they're doing, implementing school-wide. But we've also worked with districts and directly with schools. So we've worked on different levels. Our partners, Facing History and Ourselves, they started off as teachers. A group of teachers that got passionate and somehow made this thing happen and they've been working around for 50 years. So that's a little bit about who we are. So now how do we do it? With our school climate improvement approach, we work on all levels. So I don't know, I don't know if you can see. You guys have things up on your monitor? Perfect. Yes, okay. So I find that that diagram that we have or that figure that we have is really important. So we have students at the center, but we're working across all levels because honestly, they're not working in silos and we all have to be in this together and do it together. So I'm going to start with the districts. How do we help? How does the IAS initiative help the district? So we do provide some planning and implementation curricular support. So they've reached out to Travis and Stephanie so far and they've scheduled some time to work with them. We, my earring came out, sorry guys. Planned with districts to strengthen a network across five participating schools. So the great thing about this is the schools are already a community. We're just going to strengthen it, right? You're starting from a really good place. In terms of the school, we're going to build skills, knowledge, and capacity of the school leadership. So we're working closely through intensive coaching with the principal and they can select one other person who would get certified. And we're going to work with them. Things happen, right? How do you handle it, doing a pretty comprehensive initiative, when something happens, an unfortunate event of a school suicide or something like turnover, right? Like there's all these different things that are unexpected. We can only plan so much. So we help with that coaching to do that. Another thing that we help with is that this is not another flavor of the month, right? So this is not just another initiative. So how can we look at everything that you're doing well, whether it be PBIS or, you know, something about highly effective teachers? Thinking about all those different initiatives that you have going on within the community? And how can we enhance it throughout our work, right? So that's a bit that we do there. We have some robust metrics. So a good thing is, if you're going to be strategic, you need to start off with what do you have, right? And it's not anecdotal, evidence is important, but what other types of data sets do you have? So I know that New Hanover County is using AEB, so that's one data set. Another data set could be some school climate data sets that we do offer for free as part of this initiative. So there are different things that we think about. What measurements can we collect? We pay for that within limitations, right? So we have tools that we pay for. And then we help them look at the data and plan strategically, thinking about benchmarks and things of that sort. Another thing is we provide guidance on restorative justice practices. So why do we do that? This is a bullying initiative. A lot of times when you have bullying and the teachers or adults are unintentionally reinforcing bullying, it tends to be that it's a classroom management issue or just a behavior management issue, right? There are a whole other reasons that I can go to, but that is one of the main reasons. So if we're going to address bullying, we need to provide some strategies. And so that's where we have the restorative justice practices. The next one we have is looking at the students, this one, classroom, skip that one. And so this one, I briefly made mention to it, but I'm going to go a little bit more in detail on how we do that. So we provide pedagogic strategy to create a positive classroom climate that supports learning and student development. Again, we reinforce teaching restorative discipline strategies to promote kindness and teach, and that supports classroom management. The other thing is we help teachers and also admin reflect on how they can institutionalize respect for diversity. Now, I'm not only talking about diversity in terms of race. We expand that, right? Ability, other things of that sort, right? And so that's what we're talking about there. And also, because achievement matters, it is a vigorous and rich content that's aligned with standards. Specifically, in this particular curriculum, we're working with social studies and ELA. So it is aligned. We understand the importance of students achieving, so that's another thing that we do there. Students now. So we support youth to become leaders in the school climate improvement process. One concrete example that we did with the schools in Illinois, they came and they presented to the school board, "This is what's happening to my school. This is what's going on. Here are some suggestions that we have." So that's just one concrete example. There's a whole range of things that the students did. And they were middle school students that did, really helped them to become leaders. The other thing is that we strengthen youth-adult partnerships. So another major fact in terms of bullying, and so just kind of bringing it back to why we do that, is that relationships are incredibly important. So a student can be bullied, but if they feel supported, it, it almost, um, I don't wanna say it does away with the bullying itself, but it helps a lot if they have that relationship. So we're looking at relationships with adults, do they feel cared for? And also relationships with their peers as well. The other thing, uh, is that we encourage student voice. So going back to the student-centered classroom. The, the types of questions we ask, they, they promote critical thinking. Um, and also, when we're thinking about, uh, developing certain strategies, asking the students what they want. Now, we understand that they have a voice, right? And so that the adults are helping to facilitate that, but just really getting their feedback there. And then the final thing for the students is, um, we really believe that there, there's power in community bonds. And so we help with some youth-led engagement efforts. For the community, the larger community. Um, we do provide tools and professional development to strengthen the school family and school community partnerships. Now, that's gonna vary by school, and so that's why it's a little bit less there. Um, but that's another piece that we do. I mentioned before what makes this, uh, different than other bullying prevention initiatives. And so, again, I was, wanted to emphasize that it really capitalizes on what the school does well. What are their strengths? How can we enhance their strengths? How can we identify certain gaps to even enhance that strength more? Um, we support schools in, um, integrating, uh, different initiatives, as I mentioned, so that you're thinking, you're using your time effectively, you're, um, uh, bringing your resources to one particular place. A lot of times, there's, in, in our experience, there are schools that do multiple initiatives, and they're like five different teams, and one person can be across five teams, and they're tapped, right? And so just thinking about all those different pieces there. The next thing that helps is that we build capacity across the school. So we're supporting the, um, school leadership, we're supporting instructional leads, we're working with professional development so that we can impact the entire staff. And then also, we're providing, um, instructional training books and materials as well. Now, a big piece to this is that formative evaluation drives action planning. And so that's where they're gonna get access to the school climate, um, data, bullying behavior assessments data. Um, they're gonna have support in interpreting those findings. So a lot of times, we can have all the data in the world, but we don't always know how to read them collectively, right? Or sometimes, it's just a lot to read collectively, so we do help with that. And then we, um, we provide that guidance from, now you have this data telling the whole story, connecting bullying data, discipline data, connecting school climate data, what do you do next? Then, the next, uh, piece is that we emphasize collaboration across school communities. So I mentioned this, right? So, um, in here, Student Leadership Opportunities is part of the Youth Summit. That's an event that's part of this initiative. Uh, and I, I spoke about this, so I'm gonna skip this slide a little bit. So, all of that to say thank you, and finally, we pay for the resources, right? So there's all these great things, but there's realities of subs, there's realities of having to pay for professional development. And so this one point five million does pay for all of that. Um, there is limitations, of course, it is one point five million, it's not a hundred million, but, um, but, but we do think about that, we just wanna make, um, this as easy as possible because we know that money is real, time is real, and so, there it is. Thank you so much.
I, I do have a question. I think, um, I mean, I think it sounds great. I, I love the fact that, um, you know, I appreciate everyone that worked on, on the grant, I appreciate y'all being here. Uh, I think one of the, the, the biggest things that you have to have from the school end is obviously buy-in. So how, how do you, how do you get that? When you walk in and you say, I've got this great program, you know, we're gonna, we've got all the bells and whistles, we've got all these great, great tools. How do you get the folks at the school end to, to use those tools?
That is a great question, I'll answer that for you. Um, so a number of, okay. So we actually spent some time, there was an application process. And so the first thing that we wanted to see was that there was district buy-in. And we spent time with Kristen, um, I've presented to them, we've asked questions, we've applied. Then we had individual calls with the school leaders, and Ron from Williston, sorry not to put you on the spot, but he can attest to that. And so, is this great for your school? Um, and they individually had to buy in. I'm here for buy-in as well, right? So, um, commitment to coming to speak to you all, because you're part of the community as well. So that's another piece. We're actually spending between now and, um, August, for different stakeholders. Where buy, it, it's like a whole process of buying in. But not only that, we just need to learn about the culture of New Hanover County, we need to learn about what data sets you're already collecting, what you're already doing. So this, that's that whole piece there. Then in the fall of two thousand eighteen, that's when we start to then expand out. So there is a big emphasis on buy-in because you are absolutely right, it's important.
So all the schools that, that have this grant, they've already said, yep, we're on board, we're gonna do this thing, and, and, you know.
Indeed, I personally sat and spoke to them. So yes.
Wonderful, Neve, alright, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I have a question.
Yes.
So this program is funded by the Harvey Miller Foundation?
Mm-hmm.
And how are they funded?
How are they funded?
Because they're just reaching out.
They're just rich.
So, so this is a three-year program. As, as Ms. Zee Step said, you, you get the buy-in and you, you go to change the world, right? So, one question I did have, you were talking about how, um, um, I think the numbers were seventy percent experienced, but only one in four are willing to step up. After you've done your program, uh, how does that one in four change? Have you done work on that?
We do. So a big piece in this is that we talk about, um, what we call upstandard behavior. And there are different ways to step up, right? So stepping up doesn't always mean interfering immediately and say stop, right? Because there, there could be some potential issues there. Um, but yes, that is something that we address. How could both students and also adults step up?
Last question.
Yes.
Um, why did you choose New Hanover County Schools?
For the beach, I'm just kidding. Um, honestly, I, I will say this. Um, I co-presented with Judy, um, and I was really impressed with, um, how we worked well together. And then I met everyone else on the New Hanover team, Judge Corpina, I mean, Tit, sorry, Dr. Markley. Um, and I just thought that it was such a pretty impressive group. Then I was introduced to Kristen, and she was incredibly responsive. The questions that were asked, we spoke with LaShawn, um, as well. And so I, I apologize for doing the first-name basis. Um, but, you know, it just, I was incredibly impressed by the thoughtful questions that were asked, things that were going on in the community, the level of responsiveness, and just relationships, so, that's why.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? No? Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, next item on our agenda, Career Readiness Academy at Mosley Performance Learning Center, Dr. Smith.
This is a follow-up from our last meeting when we did our specialty programs, and you asked for some more information about Career Readiness Academy. Dr. Smith has had a family medical, uh, situation, and so Dr. Holliday will do the introduction.
No, she didn't say anything about how impressive the deputy superintendent was, that's by design. I'm just kinda underneath everything. We do appreciate all the work, and Judge, before you get out of here, thank you, I didn't mean to leave you out. Um, we also have a very exciting program to talk about tonight, and, uh, that is of course, uh, all the programs that we have at Mosley. Mosley is probably our most diverse and, um, I wanna say flexible program. We have lots of things going on over in that Mosley building. Um, we've got a good man in charge over there, um, Mr. Pearson. He's very happy right now because all of his teams from Philadelphia are winning championships. If you go into his office, he's got everything Philadelphia. And I'm really not sure why, but he's all about Philadelphia. And so, um, but at any rate, Mosley is, has lots of things going on from the, from the Performance Learning Center, and all the things that they're doing, uh, to the TPYA program, which, in my opinion, is one of, is, is one of the, the shining achievements of the New Hanover County schools. Those young folks, um, with special needs, going out into the world and doing things that, that a lot of folks don't think kids like that ought to be able to do. But they can, and they're very successful. That's an exciting program. And then this year, pre-K. So, basically from birth to graduating from high school, we've got stuff going on over there at Mosley. So it's an exciting program. So I'm gonna ask, um, Mr. Pearson to come up and speak on his program.
Good evening again. Um, I brought with me this evening, uh, Ms. Brooke Hazelwood, who is our academy director and our instructional coach. Um, and we are very excited to share with you a little bit about the vast and broad umbrella we've developed at the Career Readness Academy. Uh, we have been in a position now to where we've sat down and talked with Dr. Markley, uh, Dr. Holliday, uh, members of the board as well, to try and give it a new hook, um, as far as the Career Readness Academy has gone from the traditional Performance Learning Center. With that being said, we're now in our fourth year of our complete program, and we'd like to say that we offer it in an unparalleled environment for our New Hanover County students. Why do we say unparalleled? We have four programs, we have a hundred and fifty-plus students. We range in ages, as Dr. Holliday stated, from age three to twenty-two years old. We'll take a few minutes even to highlight each program. And as you all know, and most of you have seen, our doors are always open. Come and visit, let it show off a little bit, let our students show off. And we look forward to what they have to tell you, and you can see there as well. Uh, we are a NAF Academy, as you heard earlier from our partners, Lava Bank. Um, NAF is a national nonprofit. Uh, we are very fortunate to have been awarded as a Certified Academy of Finance this year. Um, NAF is a model in which they try and bring and bridge the business community, our community leaders, the leaders of tomorrow, and give them that non-traditional, and change the traditional high school experience just a little bit. I'll turn it over to Ms. Hazelwood, let her say a few things for you, and I'll come back and wrap up.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us tonight, we really appreciate the opportunity to talk about our program that we're so proud of. Um, we also are really thankful for the students and the families that have made that possible. Uh, we have a very diverse, engaged student body. Uh, they are, they come to us because they are searching, excuse me, searching for a non-traditional experience. So what we offer them is project-based learning, collaborative work, interdisciplinary instruction. Uh, we also are a well-to-well stay school, and so we find that there is a lot of value added, um, from having the stay program in our building. And of course, NAF, the National Academy Foundation. So, uh, the things that make us different, uh, if you go, yeah, there we go. So, um, really, there are a few things that really set us apart. Um, and these are the things that we try to highlight, just because there are several non-traditional programs. And so sometimes people are wondering, you know, about the nuance, you know, what really sets you apart? What makes you different? And, uh, the big reason that students come to us, and the thing that makes us so different is that we really are a small setting, and so we can offer personalization to students. Students come to us because they really want more one-on-one attention, they really wanna have a relationship with their teachers, uh, and they want a smaller setting so that they can concentrate. All of our students are really dedicated scholars that want to be successful, and they're coming to us for guidance, uh, so that they can move on into the world of work with some high school experiences that prepare them for that opportunity as well as for a college experience, if that's what they're looking for. So their experience at our school is very tailored and personalized. Uh, of course, with the National Academy Foundation, uh, we are an academy of finance. Um, we don't necessarily view that as our students are all coming to be accountants. You know, they, there are students who are gonna go that direction. We really see our academy of finance as fostering financial literacy for students and building a really strong foundation, uh, for students who are, are going out into the world. Uh, NAF Track certification does offer students preferential hiring, and so students do have to take a series of courses that are NAF courses. Uh, in order to do that, they have to pass, um, as DeeDee Bell mentioned earlier, a cumul- a cumulative project, which is a panel presentation in front of a board of judges, uh, similar to like a graduation project, but it's after each nine-week course that is a NAF class. Uh, and they also have to pass, uh, an EOC. It's a, a NAF, uh, test that students take for each of the four courses. Um, our students just took their NAF test today for Principles of Finance, and, uh, ten of the eleven students passed the course. Um, they also, all eleven students were successful in their panel presentation, so they are on their way to NAF Track certification. And what that offers them is preferential hiring at businesses that are partnered with NAF, uh, as well as, uh, other opportunities such as work-based learning, uh, so that they really have a very solid foundation that they know what they wanna do when they graduate from high school, and they've had those experiences. Uh, job shadowing, internships, career college promise courses, those are all built into the NAF model. Uh, so those off-site learning opportunities, uh, we don't see them just as field trips, we see them as opportunities for our students to really engage in the community um, and build capacity so that they are, uh, learning a lot from those experiences and taking away and reflecting on those experiences as well. So another thing that stands out, um, in a way that we are different, is that we offer five classes per semester, so our students are front-loading their courses. All students take the stay or advisory course. Um, so our students have the potential for eleven credits each year. And that, what that does is that gives them space in their schedule, in their junior and senior year, to, uh, then go out and do the Career College Promise classes, which we think are really beneficial for students, as well as to do the internship, which NAF, according to NAF, is a paid internship. Yes, ma'am?
What happens with the eleventh student who didn't pass today?
She will have the opportunity to retake the test. And so then she will retake that, that test. If she isn't successful, she will continue in NAF Track, um, and continue to take NAF courses because there's other courses in the NAF continuum that allow her to get NAF Track certified. So there are CCP courses that also count. So we will keep her in the NAF Track as long as she's interested in doing so. And if not, then she just graduates from high school with, as a NAF alumni, um, who had the opportunity to participate in the NAF program. But, you know, maybe it, it's not for everyone, but it's a great opportunity for all students.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, this is a photo of our math team, we have a really engaged math team. Um, they participate in regional competitions, they've been very successful. Um, they have developed a love of math they might not have had, had they not come to an academy of finance. Um, and so a lot of the students are sort of developing this love of finance and math because we are hoping to sort of show them what's available. A lot of students don't necessarily know what they're interested in because they haven't been exposed. So that's a big part of what we do at our school, is offer them exposure to the community and to the world of work. Um, we have about eighty students now, um, currently enrolled in our NAF Academy. We are fully engaged in recruitment efforts right now. Um, we've done thirty-five interviews in the last two weeks, and so letters will go out. Um, and we'll continue interviewing as long as we're getting, uh, applications. Um, and so we're, we're working on that process right now. Um, in twenty sixteen-seventeen, we were a NAF member academy. Um, and this year, in twenty seventeen-eighteen, we've become a certified academy. Um, so we are growing as far as the academy assessment and, um, the assessment pieces that we are meant to uphold according to NAF, which are things like project-based learning, um, exposure to work-based learning, opportunities for students, guest speakers, um, all of those things that are built into the program. So, we are really giving students a very rich experience. Um, we are working very hard to prepare them to make informed decisions about their future and to show them what that looks like by leading by example. Um, and really building their awareness of careers as well as helping them to explore and then prepare through mock interviews and then the experience of the internship, which hopefully will be paid. And that is thanks to some of our community partners, as well as the advisory board. Um, that is sort of the intent of the advisory board, is to help us provide internships for our students as well as to help us fund, uh, the internship. as well as to help us fund the internships, the paid internship opportunity for students. So we really are proud of the program. We have great students. We, we just grow and get better every year, and so we're really excited about what we have to offer. Do you all have any questions for me about the Career Readyness Academy?
Who are some of your community partners? Like, what, do you have some internships already in place?
We don't, because we are so new. We only have currently sophomores that are in the cohort. So we don't have students that have gone on to internships. But some of our community partners, we have obviously Live Oak Bank, Alliance Credit Union. We have Tilia Partners. We have Castle Branch that we work with very closely. And then all of the members are of our advisory board that represent different organizations. Merrill Lynch, a lot of financial institutions. And then a retired NAF principal from New Jersey, who has been really important in our work. And so that's been really strong and helpful to us. But we're trying to grow our board. That's one of our goals. It's in our action plan, just to reach out to the community and get more people on board with offering those opportunities for students, and also coming in and engaging with our students regularly.
Any other questions?
Sounds exciting.
Thank you. We, we are very excited, and we appreciate this opportunity to talk to you about it.
The students love Mosley. Anytime we go to graduation, they have so much pride and so, they absolutely love the instructors and love the school, and that's a testament to you.
It's true. Our students love being at our school. They choose to come there. And so they really are happy. It's a very positive atmosphere. It's very peaceful, and it's just a really nice place to work and teach. And so we're really lucky. We have this gem in our county. Thank you so much.
So you see, the academy of finance through our Career Readyness Academy has been something that has opened a lot of eyes. The fact that our students can go to these work-based learning opportunities and see that, because we may be a NAF Academy of Finance, there's more to it than just standing at a bank in a line as a teller, giving out money. I mean, they got to meet weight instructors, health and wellness instructors. They got to meet people who work behind the scenes. Earlier, we talked about DeeDee, Ms. Bell, who does the loans and things like that, all things behind the scenes that may open a few eyes to our students that they don't see regularly, besides going through the line or going to ATM. So that's been a very positive piece there. Ms. Hazelwood has been instrumental in a lot of the work with our middle schools and our counselors, trying to get these students more interested in what we're doing in our school and coming. Because as you know, our district offers a lot of quality education for our students. So we have to continue to make sure we show them that we are up there and up to speed as well. Moving on. As Dr. Holliday touched on earlier, our transition program for young adults, TPYA. This year, the 20th year anniversary. I'm very excited about that. This program has been around and has been, as we said earlier, the gem of what's going on. And it's really the beginning of a good day for me to walk down and see these students come in the mornings, do their jobs on our campus, get dressed, hop on the city bus, and navigate the city bus on their own, go to their jobs and come back to the campus. Very, very highlight of my day each day. Currently, as far as TPYA goes, we have two classes that are actually on our Career Readyness Academy campus. And we have one class that is at the Watson School of Education. As we said earlier, these are our younger adults, ranging in age from 18 to 22-years-old. They are transitioning from school to adult life, preparing these individuals to function as independently as possible in our community and on their own. Content of the program revolves around independent living, employment, and post-secondary education. Some things that our very own students say during, before, from what they hear from friends and after they leave, TPYA is awesome. I like how teachers are helpful to everyone, and I enjoy going out in the community with my friends and learning new things like cooking, cleaning, trying to become more independent. I like going on the city bus to Target and bowling. I like to fish in the beauty garden. I like to cook pizza at school. I learned how to get to and from my job at Walmart without anyone's help. I learned how to work in the school cafeteria, the kitchen, so that I can do and go out and get a job. I tell you, those are all things that our students are doing daily. I'm not sure how many of you have taken the opportunity to try and navigate the wave transit bus system. But that was one of my first goals, and it is not easy. But our student at TPYA can tell you where the 101 goes, where the 102 goes, where Florida means transfer, all the good stuff. So things are working for them. New to us last year and continue to grow is our Career Readyness e-Academy. This has been an initiative that Dr. Markley and the senior staff came to us about offering possibilities for students who are currently homeschooled to come enroll under our Career Readyness Academy umbrella and be able to either dual-enroll or become a student within our ADM and be able to work off-campus. So these students come in after being talked to through their parents or contacting Sarah Gubix or Alabriant about the possibility of this. They come in and meet with us. We have currently 12 students enrolled, eight in high school, four in middle school. If we figure it's a good fit, then we sit down and discuss the curriculum, goals, things that they should go need to be successful and get that final diploma, of course, was the ultimate goal. The students come in, for the first at least 10 days, they come in and they are actually part of our Career Readyness Academy staff, our student population, I apologize. And once they figure and show improved, that they can navigate the North Carolina Virtual Public School System site, we let them go home and work from home. They come back and check in periodically, not just for scheduling, to see how they're doing with their coursework, if they have any issues. If we notice anything along the way, we will pull them back in and have them back on campus to try and get them caught up, to give them any kind of assistance through our current staff as well.
Actually, I had a young lady graduate to UNC Honor School last year out of that program.
Yes, we did. She was very, very. And lastly, the highlight of the community, our Career Readyness Academy Mosley Pre-K Center. This has been something that we were so excited to have happen. We are fortunate enough to have the support of our board, you guys, of course, our senior staff. Mr. Schell's been out there a whole lot in support of what's going on with the Pre-K Center. Forty-five three-year-olds came walking through our doors. After a series of renovations, a big ribbon-cutting session, and a lot of happy parents. On October 25th, the official ribbon-cutting took place. Students are maturing, thank goodness. They're learning a lot of things. We've all seen a lot of the reports and data showing how good it is and how great it is to get these students in the setting as soon as possible. So this has been a great move forward. We were recently, as of about two weeks ago, officially giving our five-star license rating. So we're right there in the mix as far as that goes. It's a very good point to talk with our parents when they come in and think about coming to our place. As I said earlier, we opened our doors in October 2017. Three classrooms, 45 students, one onsite family specialist, three teachers and three assistants. This all could not have been made possible without the support from our district, from our senior staff, early childhood education department. Ms. Shannon Miles, director, has been an absolute, in her terms, rock star. So I don't use that term much, but she's a rock star. Her and our staff have been very supportive of what's going on and pulling me in and trying to bring me back up to speed on how things are coming, because it's been five or six years since I've dealt with pre-K. And things have changed a lot over the years, as you can imagine. But we're very excited, look forward to continued growth with all of our programs, including pre-K. Our students in pre-K are also getting the opportunities to be exposed to other opportunities in the community. Families have exposure to the supports, dental, vision, hearing. Nourish NC is working with us. We have 20 pre-K families who are being served through that program. Twenty students received bikes at Homeless this year from Make-A-Child. Twenty-five have signed up for the Imagination Library. All 45 of our students are part of the Raising Reader Program. So once again, some very good things happening there. Questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
This really is a program that changes lives. I'm glad you embraced it the way you have. And, you know, just following up on that, we were very fortunate that the county commissioners embraced it and helped us to make that happen. I thank you for it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a comment about the building. They're in a building that was actually closed when I first got here. And the board, some of you who were here at that time, committed to renovating and upgrading that building. And if you win that building now, it's really, they've got probably the prettiest backyard of any, of any school in the district. So Eddie, your staff did a great job getting that building back together. How do the big kids and little kids get along with each other?
The older students could not wait to have the interactions. And it has already grown to a point where it's getting very competitive between our Career Readyness Academy students and our TPYA students. But the TPYA students have the advantage, because they're on the same hall. So they, but the interaction as far as reading, a little mentoring going already. So we're doing some good things to try and build that moving forward as well.
Are any of the older students' parents of the three-year-olds?
No, ma'am. Good question. No, ma'am. May have some former students from back in my older days, or younger days, that are now parents, but no.
All right. Explain the Philadelphia connection for the board.
I was born in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And I moved to North Carolina in junior high and in the metropolis of Swansboro High School. And I went back to Philadelphia every summer, because I was brought here kicking and screaming, until my grandmother passed away. And then I fully embraced Wilmington, North Carolina, when I went to college at UNC W and have been here since. But managed to hold on to my Eagles, my Flyers, and my Phillies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That is just the program. As I said, it's a little bit of everything in that school. And if you ever get an opportunity just to go by, it's a great place to go when you're having a bad day.
All right. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report, anything?
None.
Okay. Consensus items. Personnel, Dr. Wilmer.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. No aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, budget amendments. Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention that the state budget included funding for our summer reading camps of just over half a million dollars. We also are moving some of our Medicaid reserve into the special ed budget, 588,000. And we are requesting to transfer 300,000 from bond contingency to the Myrtle Grove renovation project.
Move for approval.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yes, just one. You say you're moving from reserves over, what is that leaving reserves?
I don't know that I have that on top of my head, but you may know.
At the end of the year, we're expected to have 1.2.
Yeah, I think maybe 1.2, if, if we spend everything we're budgeting. But we can get you the, the exact number.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, old business, redistricting, appendix H with my name on it. We have, there's been a lot of discussion about redistricting. And we have heard from a lot of parents. And it's been my observation, from what we have heard, is that a lot of parents, they are concerned about overcrowding, but they are also concerned about moving their kids around. And so I asked Mr. Anderson a question. Back up here, because I, I asked him about the enrollment at Laney. And my letter says, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Anderson, please let me know. The message he sent me was, "As requested, I took our enrollment projections for Laney High School and compared them with and without redistricting." The difference for Laney is approximately 77 students. And without redistricting, the number of students over capacity peaks at 393 in the 2022-2023 year. So my question, the reason I raised it, was I've had a couple of meetings with Dr. Markley, with Mr. Anderson. And the long and the short, moving students around, I mean, actually, this is less than I thought. If we talked about senior privilege, potentially junior privilege, potentially sibling privilege, it seemed to me that in the end, we were not moving that many students. And we have heard from a lot of people, in my opinion, who are opposed to having their children moved, whether it's for, because they're involved in activities and if we move them, they lose their, for lack of a better description, seniority that they may have as sophomores and juniors in other schools. So I wanted to bring this back up, because I think we need to do something. And I'm just, I'm looking for some guidance.
I move that we indefinitely postpone redistricting.
All right. I have a motion.
Till when?
Indefinite.
You have, it's amazing that we're even making an indefinite motion. I understand. That's just amazing that you would actually make that motion.
Well, I don't, I don't really see why it would be that amazing in that.
That you indefinitely postponed redistricting when we recognize there's a problem. We've all recognized, in October, we voted seven to zero to move forward with redistricting. Five weeks ago, we voted six to one to have a final vote. The only thing that's happened in the last five weeks is we're five weeks closer to an election.
The, the thing I don't find that amazing is that when we first started talking about redistricting, senior privilege was brought up, then junior privilege was brought up, then sibling privilege was brought up, and then signature program privilege was brought up. And I simply asked the question then, who are we going to move? It makes no sense to me that if we're going to do all these things, enhance some of these programs in the schools, I would rather follow a course of letting parents make the decision if they want to move their child from, say, Laney, for example, to UH High School for the LACEM program, or the Baccalaureate program at Hagrid, or whatever it may be. Point is, we have a lot going on also on the middle school level with the schools that are being built, that things that will have to take place there to eliminate the overcrowding. We definitely have to redistrict in the, what, the 2021, when the porters net goes back to Blair and College Park. So, and I have said from the very beginning, I would rather wait, because you really don't know what you're going to run into on the middle school level and some of these other things. I would rather wait and do it all at one time. It's been my position.
That has not been your position. You and I sat, sat in the class size committee, and starting last August, and you were one of the architects of doing them separately. Is that not true? To doing them separately, to doing the middle school and high school before the, you were one of the architects of doing them separately. So when you say you wanted to do them together the whole time, that's not true.
When we were discussing the class size numbers, that is correct. But then, when we started throwing out all these other things, the different types of privileges that were going to be allowed to remain, it just makes no sense, because I certainly don't want to move, at any grade level, a segment of the population and then turn around a year later or so and then move that same area again. That's why, to me, it would make sense, because the numbers are going down. And it might work out with, with the parents making the choices, as to what school they're going to be in.
So just, just so I'm clear, you originally wanted to do middle school and high school and elementary school separate. But now you don't want to because of the privileges, correct?
Not necessarily just the privileges.
Okay.
Because at, at that point, we really don't know how many it would affect that we're going to move.
So, so you're, you're saying you don't want to move one group of high school and then the next year later, move that same group? I don't think there's been any proposal that I've, I've seen, unless you, you've seen something that moves high schools two years in a row, middle schools two years in a row, elementary schools, we obviously haven't seen those yet. But I don't think there's anything out there that shows that we're going to move a high school student and then the next year, move them again. I'm not sure where, that, that's, there are no facts that we have ever. I, I'm not sure where, that, that's, there are no facts that we have ever seen, other than you saying that, that have ever shown that we're going to move students twice. And, and Mr. Anderson or, or Dr. Markley, have, have y'all ever presented anything that we're going to move high school students twice?
No, sir.
Okay. So, let's, let's stop telling the public that we're going to move students twice year after year.
I did not say that we were going to move them, sir. I just simply said, I don't want to be put in a position to maybe have to do that. I also want to consider the elementary areas and also the middle school areas when we do this. And as I've also said, I would much rather see any type of movement here take place, parents making that decision.
Parents making the decision for redistricting or us listening to parents and as a board, us making the decision?
I think all of that would be included.
Right, absolutely. And I thought that's what we were doing.
But I think if you enhance the signature programs, which is what I thought the last meeting, a lot of that was about, was that it would allow parents, if they wanted to, for their children to transfer from one school to another through the open enrollment, to attend those schools based upon the signature programs.
And I guess, and the other question I, I would have when we're looking at these, this graph that came up, this Excel spreadsheet is, and I don't remember correctly, but we haven't even actually agreed to a redistricting proposal, have we?
Haven't what?
We haven't agreed to a proposal yet, correct? So how do we know the figures if we haven't even agreed to a proposal yet?
I don't know what figures you're talking about.
Students. How, how do we know how many students are going to go to specific high schools? Again, this is Laney, I'm not sure where, where the other stuff is. But how do we know how many students are going to go to specific high schools if we haven't even agreed to a redistricting?
Is your question how it came up, that the differential was seventy-seven?
Yes, sir, because just, you're right, Mr. Shell, because just five weeks ago, if you look at the, the PowerPoint presentation to us, under option B, the number was substantially less at Laney than what's showing today. I mean, it's eighty students less. So instead of being the seventy-seven, it would actually be a hundred and fifty-seven. So I'm not sure what redistricting proposal we went by, but they're just, and again, we haven't even agreed to one. And that was why I thought we were going to continue discussion, so we could listen to more public input. You know, I sat with, with, with the principal of Laney a couple of weeks ago and she told me how, how overcrowded it was. You know, and I don't think overpopulation, I mean, she was saying that there's, they're stuffed in there in a lot of those classes.
I spoke with her also, and she was here earlier, and I don't think she would mind me sharing, that the numbers that were going to be of students moving out still left an overcrowded situation. So we weren't really resolving that issue. Her main concern is third period lunch, because you go to class, then you're interrupted for lunch, and you go back and finish that course, that class. She needs more cafeteria space and she needs more tables. But she is willing to keep it as it is, rather than losing some of these students that are already so engaged in different programs and activities and clubs at the school.
We obviously had different conversations because.
Mr. Higgins.
But I, I understand.
Did you not hear her say, basically, that information?
I heard her say that she could manage the school.
Yes.
So, I mean, I guess as a board, we, we've started the process and, and a motion to indefinitely delay redistricting. I understand some of these, Ms. Kavanaugh, I understand you don't want to discuss it. I've, I've tried to discuss it with you. I've asked for meetings. Just five weeks ago, I asked what your opinion about a meeting was, getting the board together so we could continue discussion. Fortunately for Mr. Shell and Ms. E Step, we, we had a meeting with, with Dr. Markley. When you realized there was that, there was that meeting, instead of asking to be involved in the meeting, you criticized us. And, and I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to come up with some sort of proposal and listening to the public input and, and looking at long-range plans, whether it be using Trask or, or Murray, and trying to come up with a plan that actually, that actually works. And instead of doing that, instead of fighting the process, it would be nice if, if, if some other board members were, were to, to participate and share their experiences and maybe we could move forward and come up with some, some sort of process. But, but delaying redistricting indefinitely, that does absolutely, does nothing for our students. And it, honestly, I don't know what indefinite means, how long indefinite is. I, I suppose it's, it's, it's into the next year af- after the, the whole processes, the whole election process is over. But it just doesn't make sense to me to do that, because we're not here for that. We're here to actually address some of these issues and burying our head in the sand is, is not going to do that.
I would prefer that we do all of the redistricting at one time, instead of piecemeal it, high school one time, middle school one time, elementary one time. I prefer that if we're going to disrupt families' lives, it would be at one time. We could say postpone it until we do all of it at one time. But I didn't want to put a time period on it so that we would have to necessarily rush in doing it. So that's why I said indefinite. But I would prefer for us to do it all at one time.
And again, I don't know what's changed between all these votes we've had, where we are today. But I guess the, the issue is, and we've heard from, from Mr. Anderson as well as Dr. Markley, you know, we have issues coming up with our middle school renovations. And originally, if you remember correctly, Ms. Kavanaugh, the reason why it was a seven oh vote is because we wanted to make sure that with the construction processes that we're going to have at the middle schools, starting next year, I believe at, Mr. Anderson, Roland Greis, Middle Grove, is that correct?
That's correct.
For that, that we would need additional space at those schools. And so we were going to go ahead and implement the following year, when Noble had their major renovation, that we would have that space available. And I believe that was, that was why we did, we wanted to do middle school the nineteen-twenty school year, is that correct?
That's correct.
And isn't there a, if we were to, to miss that, that window and, and delay that, my understanding, there's going to be a substantial, up to three million dollar cost to the school system for additional modular units? If, if we aren't able to house those, those students at Noble, is that correct?
Well, we have, basically, we can, we can redistrict to reduce overcrowding or we can provide temporary space to accommodate the students at their school.
How much, what would the cost of that be?
Well, our, and just looking at, you know, preliminarily, we were estimating about four million dollars.
So if we postpone redistricting for one year and do it in two thousand twenty, it's going to cost our school system four million dollars?
Well, I, I think that that, when we were looking at that, we were not looking at any postponing redistricting. We were looking at providing a long-term solution in lieu of redistricting. So that number could be less.
All right. So it'll be a substantial amount either way, is that, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't, it's, it's a struggle for me after we've listened to what we've listened to, whether it be the teachers, whether it be capital projects, we spent the entire meeting last week, last month, talking about safety issues, to spend two, to, to waste two or three million dollars because we want to delay middle school redistricting by one year. I don't know about everyone else, but I can speak for myself that using that two to three million dollars as capital projects and maybe addressing some of these safety issues is outweighs delaying the redistricting process one year.
Mr. Anderson, uh, in my understanding of what you're saying is that if we do nothing, that we're going to have significant overcrowding in a couple of middle schools that will require some temporary space. If we redistrict, you could avoid that in the middle school arena?
We, we have, we really have two issues that we're dealing with. You know, if you think about our school system and our capacities versus enrollment, there's really two issues. The first is this population bubble that we've talked about. And we know that this year, we'll be promoting, you know, the highest fifth grade class, approximately two hundred more students than in previous years. So those students are moving into the middle schools. So, you know, for three years, we'll be, you know, dealing with that population bubble in the middle schools and then the following four years in our high schools. So, you know, that's going to be affecting our secondary schools for seven years. You know, that's, and that's, that's the first issue. The second issue is just growth in our county. I mean, obviously, our county is growing. You, you drive around New Hanover County or anywhere in Wilmington and, and you can witness that for yourself. You know, one of the things that, that I, I found interesting in the demographic projections, for as long as I've been here, I've, I've noticed that we have always had our kindergarten class was, was more students than our senior class. But that is getting ready to flip. You know, in the next, next couple of years, we're projecting that we'll actually be graduating more students than we'll be bringing in in kindergarten. So, and I bring that up because it, and that's about two hundred students. So when you look at the demographic report and you just look at the bottom line and you think we're really not, you know, it's flat, you know, or we're only growing by two hundred students, you're, you're not taking into consideration that deficit. And so we may actually, the growth that's occurring in the county i- is affecting us by four hundred students, but we, we're making up that two hundred student deficit. Now, these are, I mean, and these are round numbers, but just to, just to explain. So we are definitely having growth in our county and we're projecting growth in our county. But that's another way that that bubble is going to be affecting us over, over the next several years. So, you know, looking at that population bubble and the growth in our county, you know, we, we were trying to come up with a plan that would get us over the hump of the population bubble and, and, but also provide a long-term solution to, that addresses the growth. And I, you know, I think we could do that with redistricting or we could do that with temporary space, modular facilities, or we could do that with a combination of the two.
Is it your belief that as painful as redistricting is, that that could eliminate, if, if done properly, that eliminate the need for these modulators?
I'm not, I don't think it's going to completely eliminate the need for the modulators. You know, I think that it would significantly reduce the need. But I, I think to get through that seven-year period, you know, we're going to have to relocate some existing modulators or provide some temporary modulators.
We spent a fair amount of time talking about high school. Now we're talking about middle school. So, off the top of your head, you're over at Noble. Could you kind of just give us a ballpark of where we're very, very over and where we have significant capacity in the middle schools?
Well, we have, I wouldn't say we have significant capacity in any of our middle schools. You know, we have the, the most, the most overcrowded schools are going to, next year will be Noble and, and Murray. With redistricting being implemented in nineteen-twenty, we knew we had one year to get through. And we could make some temporary arrangements, be very creative in, in creating some classrooms, you know, for that one year. Without redistricting, I think the better solution would be to go ahead and provide some temporary modular buildings. And, and we would put those, you know, at, at Noble and, and at Murray. If we were, you know, if we were just going to purchase modulators, you know, I think that, you know, we are looking at a four million dollar number. But I think we have, also have the opportunity to, to cut that number down because, you know, when, obviously, we're going to be providing some temporary modulators for swing space for renovations to our four schools. And we really need to look at that and when those modulators are going to be there, when that construction is going to take place. And is it possible, you know, to, to go ahead and, and leverage those dollars, you know, to, to really get us through the renovations as well as any overcrowding? So, I think that, you know, there is an opportunity to bring that. The four million dollars, I would say, is, that's, that's kind of a worst-case scenario. I think there's a, a good opportunity that, or a good possibility that that would, could be much less. If you wanted to look at a combination, you know, maybe we make some, some adjustments, some tweaks in lines as well as modulators, I think you could bring that number down even further.
So you don't see the need for another middle school to be built in the next five to seven years? You're thinking through redistricting and if we had to some modulators, we can avoid that expenditure?
No, I think that, I think in looking at the current, current capacities and, and our growth projections, that, you know, we do need another middle school. I'm, I'm not considering, you know, modulators as a long-term solution. You know, that, they may get us through five to seven years, but that five to ten range, I would hope that we would be looking at a more permanent facility in a new middle school.
Well, that had been my understanding for some time and you hadn't said that, so.
I'm sorry.
That's why I was trying to pull that out of you a little. So, we, it sounds like we can avoid, in the next year or two, some modular expense if we move forward with redistricting a little earlier than what's being talked about and then plan long-term to have a middle school, uh, of, of construction or at least planning and then further construction later on. We need to communicate those things to our county commissioners who foot that bill. And that's why I've been a little bit insistent on talking about some of the longer range issues as part of, as part of, of redistricting or part of, in lieu of redistricting, more modulators. So I think this board's got some, this has been meaningful. I think this board's got some tough decisions to make.
I do have one follow-up question. Eddie, you said that there were no middle schools with capacity right now. It was my understanding that we do, we do have one, we have Holly Shelter. Is that not true?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, I, what I was, what I meant is I don't think there's any that are significantly under capacity. Holly Shelter does have excess capacity, you're correct.
Thank you.
Well, Holly Shelter would be the only one, because I know at Williston, there was a little bit of space there, but with closing Virgo, you know, that, that's going to be taken up. But also, as Mr. Shell mentioned, that, I know there's been talk for quite some time about the Sudbury Road complex, the land out there that, you know, because we've talked for years about Laney, Trask, you know, move, turn that into part of Laney's campus and then build out there on Sudbury Road, which would eliminate that problem.
And that, that is still our current long-range plan. And, you know, whether we're redistricting or providing modulators or doing a combination of both, what we're really talking about is how do we get from today until that point, when the, when these new facilities are open?
Mr. Anderson, can I ask, can I ask you a question about that? We, the projections show, the ten-year projection for high schools show about from today to two thousand and eighteen, about a three hundred and fifty student increase. Is that, is that correct? In, in our high schools? I think that's what we had.
Would you say that again? I didn't hear all.
Projections, the, the amount of high school students we have today.
Uh huh.
As opposed to the, what, the amount we'll have in ten years, and I believe we talked about this last Friday at our meeting, is about three hundred and fifty students. Is that the projection, our projection show?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so we have forty students currently at our, I'm sorry, C-Tech. And with an anticipated in five to six years, four hundred students, correct? Is that, is that about how many we would ideally like to have at C-Tech?
Like to, but because of the small entry classes, it'll be a little, it'll probably take six years to get to that number.
So the, the point that I'm making is in ten years, hopefully, we'll be full up and running at C-Tech. So that's an additional three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty students of space, which to me means, since we're developing that additional space, the high school projected growth from now until ten years is flat. Is that, is that accurate? Would that be accurate to say?
Well, in between that time, we actually go up to over. Well, in between that time, we actually go up to over nine thousand students.
Understand, understand. And, and we can't build up, we're not going to be able to build a middle school between, for the next six years, seven years. Is that, so, we gotta figure out what we're going to do during the next, this part.
And I would also say that, um, we, um, we update our enrollment projections frequently um, because I've always said, I think enrollment projections are very good from zero to five years. But when you start projecting enrollment from five to ten years out, I think it really is a projection and that a lot, a lot can change.
Absolutely, and I understand that, but we're, the information you've provided to us.
That's correct.
We, we have to rely on some information, that's the information you've relied to us. So, taking those three hundred and sixty students that are going to C-Tech out, our high school populations now projected, and I understand it can change, into ten years is flat. So, my question is, is we're talking about doing Murray and we're talking about doing Trask as ninth-grade centers um, and then building two middle schools to accommodate Murray and Trask, um, which would be around ninety million dollars, forty-five million for each middle school?
Yes, forty-five million for a middle school.
And we're looking right now at a redistricting process that we, we can, um, redistrict these high schools and, um, each one of them would ba- basically be a little bit over capacity. But as we've heard, um, especially from even Mr. Shar, she, she can manage where she is. Obviously, she'll be able to manage it better, um, if she has less students there. My concern is, is that even though we're talking about spending ninety million dollars on, on potentially two new middle schools, do we really need them? Can't that money be used elsewhere? It just seems to me if the projections are flat right now for the high schools, we don't need to build two m- two new middle schools.
I don't think we, um, I don't think we're adequately housing and providing for our high schools today for the high school students. I think that our high schools are currently overcrowded. And even with, uh, flat, being flat over a ten-year period, you know, we, they will, will still be overcrowded. And that doesn't, um, that doesn't bring into play, um, you know, how do our high schools, existing high schools compare to what we would build in a new high school today? And, and I would tell you, there are a lot of, there are a lot of facilities, uh, spaces that we would build in a new high school today that don't exist at, um, at Ash or at, um, Hogard and at Laney and New Hanover. So, where, I understand what you're saying and you're correct that in a ten-year period, our projections show our high school capacity flat. But the, the other side of that is, I think there's a need today. And, and even with it being flat, that need doesn't go away.
It's a, a need that our high schools are overcrowded today, a need to do something today, is that what you're?
A, a need that our high schools are overcrowded, are, a need that, um, we have inadequate facilities and outdated facilities and, um, outdated buildings and infrastructure.
And wait, just last question, this spreadsheet, did you develop this spreadsheet? Is this a spread, Excel sheet that you, you developed that was?
The, the Laney?
Yes.
Yes, that's a, that is actually a spreadsheet that, um, was part of the demographic report. I just put the summary on the bottom.
What's the difference, um, in, why is there such a substant-? First of all, I guess, what redistricting plan did you use?
Um, well, the last redistricting plan was, we actually submitted three options.
Right.
And, uh, the, the numbers that I believe we used, the twenty-two oh four, was a combination of, um, two of the plans where we were in, um, include, I don't, honestly, I don't know if we included Landfall. I know we, I included everything else. But whether or not we moved, uh, that number has, has Landfall, being moved to New Hanover, um, I don't think it does. I'd have to go back and, and verify that.
Because I think the option one B, the information that you provided to us back in February showed up, current overcapacity of three hundred and ninety-five students at Laney. And after, um, option one B were to take effect, the overcapacity would be about two hundred and one students, which is about a fifty percent drop. So, that was just, was substantially different than what option one B was, uh, but that makes sense if you didn't include.
And it could be too, um, I used the most current membership numbers in this spreadsheet. And so, there, there may be, um, some differences in the current membership. And these numbers are, uh, month-one memberships that we used in redistricting. I was trying to provide the most, most up-to-date information.
I, I currently have a motion. I do not have a second.
I have a second.
Okay, I have a second. Any further questions or discussion about Ms. Kavanaugh's motion to suspend redistricting indefinitely? Yes, sir.
No, I, I do, but I thought, Ms.
I have.
I'm on the wrong side.
I, I understand all the variables that we've talked about and, and I think we've added so many exemptions that we really haven't helped Laney. But to put it off indefinitely is really going to be worrisome to the students and the parents.
I'm willing to change that to doing all redistricting at the same time.
Which would be what year?
Year after next. If I remember correctly, is that when we're doing elementary in?
Uh, Eddie, what's the elementary deadline?
Well, the, the year that, um, that the elementary redistricting would be implemented is, uh, the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year.
The planning would have to take place during the nineteen twenty school year.
Okay. Is that what you're amending your?
Yes.
You're changing your motion?
Yes.
So, under that proposal, you want to do middle school redistricting in twenty-twenty-one, is that correct?
I want to do everything at one time.
That would be in twenty-twenty, is that correct? In order to, to get it ready for the twenty-twenty-one school year. We'd have to do it ahead, a year ahead, parents need to know.
When we originally talked about, to your point, I think we were trying to give elementary students or families up to two years notice to know exactly what, and I think that's why we developed the original elementary. I think Mr. Higgins said eighteen month, isn't it, am I correct, Mr. Higgins? Eighteen months you wanted to give notice to those students? And I had said up to two years if we were able to do it.
I'm, I'm good with either eighteen or, or two years. I'm trying to figure out exactly.
Two years is, is, would be, um, in September.
Of?
Five months.
Well, the mo- current motion, I'm trying to figure out when, when Ms. Kavanaugh is projecting.
I thought we were redistricting elementary in the twenty-twenty-one year. I thought that's when we were going to approve it.
It's the effective date.
So, you would have to do it in the twenty-nineteen, twenty.
Yeah.
If we're going to be looking at maps for elementary school and looking at maps for middle school and looking at maps for high school, all at the same time? I, that to me seems overwhelming. And, I mean, I, I, I totally get that we want to take parent, you know, the parent comment into, into consideration. And I think we have. But that doesn't, this doesn't take the schools into, um, into consideration at all or the students into consideration or the faculty into consideration or the school balance into consideration. I mean, I've sit, I've sat here and, and I'm, 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 I'm sorry, I'm very tired. And I'm not going to use correct grammar, apologize in advance. But I, 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 we are completely missing one really big piece of this with the high schools. And that's, that's balance. We have height, we have New Hanover that, and we talked about this. And we've just pushed that way off to the side. New Hanover's, uh, the, the, the poverty numbers are, are, are much higher than the rest of the schools. And we're just going to let that sit there. And we're going to let Hogard sit way under until twenty-twenty-one because we feel like it. And then, we're going to try to address all these maps altogether for no particular reason. I don't understand why. So, if we're, if you're going to vote that way, you're going to vote that way. But it's not in the best interest of the schools. It's just, to me, fairly arbitrary because we're, we're trying to, we're trying to please some parents, not all of them. Some of them might want to move. We're hearing from the noisy ones who don't.
And they can't.
But we're never going to make everybody happy. We're not going to make the elementary schools, uh, parents happy. To me, the high school students are the ones we do have to take care of more. I didn't like the idea of moving them in the fall because you're, because of all the activities. The elementary school students are a little bit more portable. We have to be careful, careful with the high school students. But to push that out this far makes no sense to me whatsoever.
And Mrs., I, I totally agree with what you're saying about the socioeconomic numbers. So, I apologize if I've missed that. But I think one of the great discussions that we were having before this was tabled, um, was looking at areas maybe to balance New Hanover High School. Because again, it's, it's a great high school and, um, if you look at some of the numbers that were presented to us, there's certainly an imbalance with some of the other high schools. So, I was encouraged by some of the discussions we were having and, um, the momentum that we were building to maybe making some of those decisions. And all of a sudden, it was just tabled and now to say to table it indefinitely or for three years, that just, it, there's, there's no way that's in the best, best interest of our students. And especially as, like, Ms. Estep said, that our high school students, which really are the most impressionable right now.
I, I ask that we have a work session because whenever the three board members wanted to meet with Dr. Markle, we couldn't add another person because then we'd have a quorum. So, I ask that we have a work session so we could all hear the same thing. Ask all the questions and hash it out. Nothing else being presented. Just sit here and talk through it, get Mr. Anderson, have everything ready for us. And I don't think we've really, I don't have enough informa- I have these numbers, but I don't have a solution. And I don't want to be put to a vote, I'm not running for anything, so.
Well, Ms. Nichols, with all, with all due respect, you actually proposed two meetings in March, two, two, two work sessions, which was a great idea. They were, this board decided not to do it. So, I don't know, uh, unless we're going to sit up here right now and say, let's plan a work session so we can talk about redistricting, let's, we're all here right now, everyone's watching. Is everyone in agreement that maybe we need to have, I think Ms. Nichols is, I, I am. Is everyone in agreement that we need to have a, uh, redistricting workshop here in the next, next couple of weeks so we can discuss redistricting? I mean, I'd like to hear.
Also, what would be nice would be if there was any way, and I don't know how you would come up with it, the numbers of how things kept changing as far as senior privilege, junior privilege, sibling privileges, signature program privileges.
There's no senior, there's no.
Let me finish, please. Uh, how could we come up with a group of numbers as to how that might impact what we might have to do as far as redistricting? That's my whole point.
Understand. The privilege in, if you remember correctly, the, the, first of all, there's no specialty privilege. Specialty programs are totally outside redistricting.
But they were brought in at these previous discussions.
No, they weren't. They were ne- they were totally separate. Uh, they, the specialty programs are totally separate from redistricting. We had presentations to try to build that.
But you put it in there that they could remain there if they were in that program.
The specialty programs.
Signature programs are what are at the high schools right now.
Okay.
Specialty would be Mosley and.
I, I apologize, I meant the signature. So, we're, we're talking about, um, STEM, LICEM.
Right.
The IB program and the marine.
Right, the traditional high schools.
Totally separate. And I, and Mr. Anderson, Dr. Markle, am I correct, totally separate from redistricting, those programs?
Yeah, but they were, parents use those as part of, I think that was often.
They were brought in.
They were brought in as part of the comment section. But in terms of actually redistricting, specialty programs are separate in, in themselves.
And, and I think the reason why we were trying, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why we were trying to talk about the junior, senior privilege is as a way of accommodation in a transition year of one year to implement our full-scale high school, um, redistricting. And s- because we heard from a lot of parents that were saying, I have a sophomore in, at Laney, Ashley, Hogard, Hanover. Um, they've been there for two years and now you're going to yank the rug out of them. So, I, when I introduced those programs, the intention to do that was to make sure that you actually have kids. Um, it, it does help, it helped the numbers.
But then, I'm not necessarily opposed to introducing those things, but that's why I made the point, who are we going to actually move?
But eventually, we'd move everyone. Eventually, eventually, you'd, you'd move them. Eventually, the lines would be changed. These were options to give parents a transition year to, to do it. Eventually, you're not going to have junior, senior privilege because you're not going to be eligible.
I'm talking about the signature programs privilege.
No, we're not talking about it.
Signature programs are totally separate.
I know that, but that was brought in, that if they were to apply for that, like, the LICEM program in New Hanover, they'd be able to go there.
Right.
If they wanted to go to the back.
That's what they do now.
That's what I'm saying. What do you mean it wasn't in there?
At Laney, for example, if the, if it was to, to move, let's say, somebody in Landfall to Hanover, but they wanted to stay at Laney for the STEM program, all they had to do was ask to stay at Laney for the STEM program and they'd stay at Laney. If they met the qualifications. Yeah, but I thought that was like, pretty much open from what I heard from Mr. Shaw. That, you know, it's just a series of classes that they, right, but that's, that's protective. Uh, same thing with, uh, Ashley. If somebody wanted to, was being moved but had a, a desire to go into the marine science program, then they could come to us and say, I want to go into marine science and they could stay at.
So, therefore, who are we going to actually move?
I don't know.
Mr. Higgins, let me say that, um, I'm in complete agreement with what Ms. Nichols is saying in that, um, we do not have enough information. And it's not because the staff hadn't tried. But, um, I will say that, um, what we, I think the tip of the iceberg tonight was that, uh, if we don't redistrict, we're going to be writing a big check. And if we put it off, we're going to be writing a big check for temporary housing. We need to send our county commissioners a message whether we need, um, to start planning for a middle school or not. And that's been the, my biggest, um, reservation, uh, is a nice word, uh, from, from all of this has been that I don't think we've had that discussion as seven-member board to talk about those kinds of things. So that you, you kind of plan what, what your long-term needs are based on information from the experts. And, uh, we've got, uh, a demographic report, I don't want to hate, hesitate to say this, but we have a demographic report that says one thing. And we've got, uh, planners with the city and the county that says, oh, no, you're about to grow as much as fifty percent in twenty years. That's over a hundred thousand people. I can't help but think a hundred thousand people. You're going to have a few, uh, kids in the schools, more than what we're talking about. It's flat, no disrespect. But at the end of the day, I think we have, uh, have, my suggestion is that, um, I ask, uh, Ms. Kavanaugh to table her motion and that, uh, we, uh, schedule a, a work session where we can talk about all these things. And if one work session doesn't get it done, we plan another.
Well, let me just simply say, I have been through, what have we been through? Probably eight redistrictings in our time on the board. Um, and unfortunately, what has happened with this, and, and Mr. Waltman may disagree with me, this is the most rushed redistricting plan I have ever been involved in. I mean, we have had plans that we have spent a year having, as you said, work sessions, meetings, pulling a segment here, pulling a segment there. I mean, I, I fear that what, this, this whole talk about New Hanover and the composition of its, its enrollment.
Socioeconomic.
Begins to sound like going back to busing. And, and I don't think the people of New Hanover County want that, but I do think we need to dis- discuss it.
Let me, let me comment since you're pointing to me about that.
You're the one who said it.
Which, I never said busing and I understand you're running for reelection, you're trying to do that. But that's inappropriate, Mr. Higgins. I never said, I never said anything about busing. Absolutely not.
You're reducing the socioeconomics by four percent. You're not going to get it down to forty or something that, you talked about how Hogard is. You're going to have to pick up students someplace and take them to Hogard and. and bring Hogard students to New Hanover if you want to get the socio-economic enrollment down to about thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent.
And that, and you know what? There's, there's never been, we've never even talked about numbers doing it like that, Mr. Higgins. That I wanted to get to thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent.
But you, you're talking about improving for, by four percent, going from forty-nine to forty-five? I think that's what it goes to.
And, and that's what was talked about, uh, I think that it was forty, forty-nine point three-nine to forty-four point three-five.
Okay, six percent.
And you're not changing the districts all that much.
That's not, and that's not busing kids.
You're not doing a whole lot different than what we're doing now.
Well, anyway.
No, not, not, I, I.
Are you, Ms. Kavanaugh, you were on the table, and we have a, a work session with this also sole topic of discussion?
Yes, but I don't want anybody to misinterpret. And yes, I'm running for reelection, I'm not doing or saying anything. I have the guts to say what I mean and to do what I say. And I challenge anyone to disagree with that. Because throughout the years, I have said exactly what I think and have done exactly what I thought was best. So I think you're hitting below the belt when you keep throwing that out to people. I have attempted to be very respectful, quiet, supportive tonight. And I don't think that can be said about everyone at this table. I am willing to table it, but I don't want anyone to misinterpret. I truly think that we ought to do all redistricting at the same time. And if I table it, I don't want that to be misinterpreted as the fact that I am willing to break it up into different successive times.
So we need to agree on a time, when we have adequate time. And I'm, when I say adequate time, need to be com, come prepared to spend five, six hours.
We've done that in the past, and we can do it in the future.
Right.
I do not see it happening in one work session. Having, you said eight redistricting, I've probably been through twelve. So I know exactly what it's going to take. And yes, I'm willing to spend the time.
Okay, I know that, I know that. All right, uh, Ms. Adams, can you? I mean, I don't know if the board is prepared right now to say when they, when they could meet.
Aren't we supposed to reserve the third Tuesday of each month?
I would like to ask that if we do this, that we have in this room or at the other building, the technology so that we can pull things up. Because you can't do it just from paper copies of maps. I know that from experience. You're going to have to have the technology in order to be able to make a responsible decision. So I don't know where logistically that would be best, Mr. Anderson, but.
We'll, we'll look at that.
Okay, I, I'm sure that Ms. Brinson and you can find some place and some method that we can be successful.
So at the work session, you want to look at elementary, middle, and high school district maps and propose changes?
I think we ought to, I think we could do it over three.
Look at everything.
Three work sessions to address high school.
But, so the intent of the work session is to create a redistricting plan?
That's, or, or discuss whether or not it'll.
To look at it, I'm not, I'm not gonna say that I'm prepared to vote. But yeah, to look at it, to discuss it, to educate myself, and to feel more comfortable about the process.
Can we also talk about long-term stuff? I think that was pretty important, that we can look ten years out and.
Which would help them make a decision now for what to do.
Right.
If, if we have that information.
Mr. Anderson, I would say that that discussion would include a long-range view, redistricting options, what temporary housing costs would be under the different scenarios. I know you've already done all that, but I think you'd be prepared so that, as this board discusses it, we have the ability to do cost benefit and, uh, be in a position to, uh, tailor our request to the county commissioners in the future for what we're gonna do and what we're gonna need to operate.
Also, I think you might want to address the fact that we've got some, some educational cottages that are almost as old as I am. And, uh, you know.
Oh, my God, they're old then.
I know. Uh, but that, uh, you know, can we potentially, if we do use them to alleviate overcrowding for a while, when we address, finally address the issue with brick-and-mortar structures, are there units that we can replace those out-of-date, dilapidated units with? These units that we may have acquired. So in, in a sense, it's not like we're just getting them and temporarily. They actually serve our long-range purpose for some of our, uh, mobile units. So you could kind of look at, what's the oldest ones, how many of them are there? Kind of like the replacement of computers replacing these units.
Mr. Higgins, is that, do you think we should talk about, we're talking about spending money, obviously.
Right.
Do you think maybe at some point also start developing a plan for the next bond cycle?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So incorporate that in?
Yeah.
What you're, talked, I mean, obviously, it's gonna be money we're gonna need from, from somewhere, but.
Sure.
Incorporating the bond discussions and that as well.
Yeah, and I, I mean, and if we, you know, if we determine that we can survive without having to build a middle school, but maybe building in addition to a school, then, I mean, you know, those, all those things we need to talk about. Because one of the criticisms we got was, or at least I saw, was that the board was not looking out into the future. They were just simply addressing the issue right now and not looking, you know, where are we gonna be in ten years, where are we gonna be in, you know, twenty years?
Okay, yeah.
Also, with the maps, Mr. Anderson, the, the most massive in all this will certainly be the elementary, because when you send Blair students back to Blair, and you've got an empty school there, that will probably impact every elementary school in, in the system. But also, we would need information as to, uh, where we are with River Lights, as to what they are going to, uh, I know we've talked about so much acreage and so forth, and we've also talked about expanding Mary C. Williams, but then, uh, there might be some other possibilities, like a K-eight, something like that, due to the situation at Murray.
We talked, in that Friday meeting, we talked a lot about southern part of the county, too, identifying properties if we were gonna do a middle school, where to, where to put those.
The only other thing down there I'm aware of is Battle Park, and I don't know what's happening there.
Well, that's got too much, that's got too much wetlands on it.
I'd like to be prepared to discuss things, even such as, like, a ninth-grade center for Laney at Trask, things that we have talked about, to look at the viability and whether or not we're just wishful thinking, or, or things like that could actually be done.
Well, the seventeenth, Mrs. Adams said, is our second Tuesday, or third Tuesday?
But, I mean.
Well.
Y'all?
How about a Monday, the sixteenth?
Day before the end of tax season.
Pardon?
I said that's the day before the last day of tax season, can't do it.
Oh. Well, see.
I could do the twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
I don't have my calendar.
I don't have my calendar, I wasn't expecting to.
Well, whatever, I'm not coming back till the twenty-fourth. I'm going out to see my daughter in Colorado Springs and my grandson.
You're given permission to do that?
I could do the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Could you send the dates, and let us let you know tomorrow? Because I don't have my calendar that, uh, that's just my opinion.
And speaking of, of calendars, please respond to Mrs. Adams about the hearings, because this mother has asked quite a while ago for a hearing. And not, and we're not getting a total response of seven board members.
I responded immediately.
I did too.
I did too.
So do we have four now? Okay.
I couldn't make it.
She responded, she couldn't make it.
Yeah.
Well, she asked us, I responded, and I responded.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, you did, you did.
We, we need four yeses, what we need.
I think we need to take a break, too.
Uh, I think we got four items that we'll be able to get rid of very quickly. So, all right, so we're gonna, Ms. Adams is gonna send out a request for when, uh, you know, we can meet for a work session. And, uh, hopefully, maybe send out some dates. And instead of just letting us respond, send out, I guess you would, you'd send out some dates. And, uh, I mean, the world will, will survive without me, but I would like to be here.
Yeah, I think you need, we need full board.
Yeah. All right, well, then let's move on then to new business. Uh, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, proposed county budget request. Ms. Small, you want to take five, I mean, how, how long is this gonna take?
It's, I thought we were gonna be done by seven folks, so.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna take about a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Been two and a half hours, I think we're due a break.